Good evening and welcome to the October 26, 2020 Town Council Meeting. Calling this meeting to order, I see that all our counselors are present with regard to attendance. And I'd like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm Sheri. I know that we have a couple of very special guests for public engagement, but do we have anyone else?
There has been nobody that's checked in with me.
Excellent. So I'd like to introduce Delia Castriano and Katie Richter, two fabulous third graders from the Dolby School, who are a member of Brownie Troop 88219. And Jonathan Chines introduced me to the project that they've done in attempting to get their Suffrage Centennial Patch, which promotes voting. So I'd like to ask Delia and Katie if you want to say a few words about your project. And just unmute when you chat. Excellent.
Hi, I'm Delia and I'm going to be sharing what we've been doing in Girl Scout. So my troop is working on earning the Suffrage Centennial Patch. This year is the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, which gave women the right to vote. Since I'm too young to vote, passing out signs was a way that I could be involved in. Even though I'm too young to vote, I want to take action with my troop and help remind people in Wakefield that I should, that they should vote. My troop is delivering signs to people and asks them to promise that they would vote. At our troop meetings, we've been learning about the suffrage movement and some of the brave women who processed, protested because they wanted the right to vote. I think voting is important because women fought so hard for the opportunity to vote. And it's important for your voice to be heard.
Delia, that was fabulous. As someone who's been on this committee for almost eight years, I would say you were one of the most articulate speakers we have ever had. So you should be really proud of yourself. Katie, do you want to say anything?
Hi, I'm Katie Richter. I like learning about women's suffrage because it is important to me. Those women fought for all the girls like me who are just as smart or smarter than boys. We can make good decisions when voting. I like talking with people in town about the importance of voting. One woman told me that her grand, when her grandparents immigrated here, they couldn't vote until they became citizens. Her parents taught her to vote in every elections because it is a privilege. Our troop wanted to remind everyone in town that this is a privilege and it is important to vote. I was glad that everyone I talked to promised they would vote. And I hope our signs reminded others to vote too.
Katie, thank you so much. That was absolutely perfect. And I think girls might be a little smarter than boys, but that's just between the two of us. I want to thank you both for coming. It's such a pleasure to have two of our young future voters be so supportive of such an important right that we all have to do next week. Is there a way if, I know that your mom posted something on social media with regard to folks if they wanted a sign. I don't know if you have any more signs left. No, well, that's good. You got rid of them all. I think that's awesome. Thank you so much. Do any members of the council have anything to say? Make any comments? Jonathan?
I just wanted to say briefly, thank you to Delia and Katie and their families for putting this together. I, you know, when I, when I reached out to Delia's mom to ask about the project, she said the response was overwhelming. And, you know, the fact that, you know, you girls have already distributed all the signs is tremendous. So thank you for what you're doing. And since I do have a sign in my yard that says, I promised a Girl Scout I'd vote, I do want to make clear that both my wife and I have actually voted. So you've at least, you've had some success in our house.
That's great.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both so much. You're welcome to join us. It gets a little boring after this, so feel free. You can scoot right off. But thank you and good luck with everything. Moving on to item, you're welcome, honey. Moving on to item number five, approval of the minutes. We had some, we were sent initial minutes and then some amended minutes. Is there a motion to approve the October 15, 2020 Town Council Meeting Minutes? Is there a second? Moved by Paul, second by Julie. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, vote. Myself, I, Peter? Julie?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Ed?
I.
Excellent. Am I missing someone? No, I have everyone. Oh, Marine!
Yes.
Thanks. All approved. Thank you. Item number six, I'm really excited to toss this right over to Steve to introduce Erin Kokinda, who is our new Community and Economic Development Director.
Great. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And Erin is on to say a few words and to answer brief softball questions. That being her first meeting, but it is with great pleasure that I introduced you Erin Kokinda, who has been appointed Community and Economic Development Director for the town of Wakefield. I am, as was the entire screening committee, very, very impressed with Ms. Kokinda's knowledge, contacts, experience, passion and energy for the position. She is also very familiar with Wakefield. As the council is aware, after the position was approved, we did appoint a screening committee and they went through many applications. And also due to our very close ties with Mass Business Development and former Secretary J. Ash, we were able to, you know, gain some insight into a lot of the members that applied. So that was very helpful. And after a number of interviews, Erin was right at the top. Our other top candidate actually got scooped up by Mass Business Development. So I think that we have a real eye for talent and we're thrilled that Erin is here to work with us. Erin has earned and received a Bachelor of Arts in Geography, Urban and Regional Planning from Bloomberg University of Pennsylvania. She also minored there in Political Science. So I think those are some great combinations. Ms. Kokinda worked for seven years as an Economic Development Assistant in the city of Lowell, where she worked closely with the business community, providing outreach and support, as well as maintaining a database of over 200 potential commercial properties in Lowell available for development. And she did focus on developing near the UMass campus in Lowell as well. Since 2016, Ms. Kokinda has worked with the Middlesex III Coalition, most recently as its Deputy Director. At the Middlesex III Coalition, Ms. Kokinda cultivated relationships with all stakeholders, including members of the business, nonprofit, regional, state municipal communities, to, among other goals, promote and attract new business to the Middlesex III region. And we want her to attract new business to the Wakefield region. So please join me in welcoming Erin Kokinda. I think you have three, three children, Erin?
I do, yes. I'm the mother of three children. It's been a busy five years. The oldest is five, a three and a one-year-old. So, you know, if, I like to say, work is my break. But, you know, it's, it's been great. Wakefield's been a great community for us. On a personal level, we've lived here now for seven years. Me and my husband bought our house before we were even married on, in town. Ended up buying a house two years later after our family expanded pretty quickly, a quarter mile. So needless to say, Wakefield has a special place in our heart. When I saw this position open up, you know, I originally saw it in March and then I saw it open up in June again, June, July, August, in the summer. I, I was beyond thrilled to go apply. I was very lucky and am very lucky to have been part of the Middlesex III Coalition for four and a half years. I learned a variety of things there that I probably would never have learned anywhere else. And it really had to do with the whole public and private partnership, which I learned is very, very crucial to any sort of economic development, no matter where you are. As Steve alluded to, we are a public-private partnership. We're about 130 businesses and partner organizations. We work really closely with the Mass Office of Business Development, Mass Development, Mass Bio, Mass Life Science Center. So we really work with a diverse group of people. And I really think that is something that I'm very excited to carry over into this position. I like to think of myself as a, you know, I don't know, it's hard to tell how someone is over Zoom, but I think I'm, I'm very, I'm easygoing and easy to build relationships with. And ultimately, I love to get things done. And if that's, you know, meeting the right people to get those done, that's what I, that's what I do. I'm really thrilled to have this opportunity, not only on a professional level, but also as a personal level to really feel like I'm making a difference for myself, my children and our community as a whole. I had a friend over beginning of the week and we walked from my house downtown and she was just, she was so taken back at this community and what we had to offer. And so I'm just thrilled to build upon that. There's so much opportunity here in more ways than one, either that be our downtown, our residential areas, our, our office parks. I know there's a lot of opportunity now, more than ever, with new companies, or companies moving out of the Boston area. And so I think this is the perfect time to capitalize on that. And I'm thrilled to be here to, to be part of that. So I just want to thank you again for having me here. I'm thrilled for the opportunity. And I look forward to getting to know each and every one of you and working together to grow the community. So thank you.
You need to unmute Ian.
Sorry about that. I do that at least three times a meeting. As just an aside, I was, my, my record for not voting for a position and have then having the person be one of the best hires we ever made is hopefully will be true with you and I have no doubt it will. Tom Walsh, I did not vote to hire and he's the best thing we've ever done for this town, up until you right now. So I am so excited to have you on board. And I think what you said about Boston companies leaving to go for the suburbs is really exciting for town like us and where we're situated. So welcome. Please reach out to any one of us. We are so excited to get this going. Do any members of the council have any comments or questions for Erin? Sorry. Oh. Julie, if you can hear me, take over. I just lost video.
Are you in?
Yeah, I'll come back in though. Oh, there we go. Paul, I see your hand raised.
Ma'am, Julie, you mentioned Julie. Let Julie go first.
No, she was just asking me to take over because she couldn't see.
Yeah, I was asking her to save me.
I'm, I'm, I'm mistaken. I'm sorry. Erin, I'd like to welcome you to Wakefield. I know it's not official yet, but it will be very soon. I really look forward to having the opportunity to sit down and talk with you. This is a position that I've talked to the council and Mr. Mayo now for a good many years. I am thrilled beyond compare that we actually have the position and to have such a qualified candidate be chosen is a dream come true. So I really look forward to sitting down, talking with you and working on shaping the community to make it a better place than it is today. So thank you very much and welcome aboard.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I look forward to working with you. There's still so much I need to know when it comes to Wakefield itself. So I look forward to learning from all of you. So thank you.
Any other comments? All right. Excellent. Erin, I'm sure we will have other comments later. Thank, thank you so much for joining us and welcome to our town and our family. We're really excited about this.
I'm thrilled. Again, I look forward to meeting you all in person someday, whatever that might be. But it'll be, it'll be great. But we still will work together very closely. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Erin. Steve, do you want to take item seven, the regular town meeting? Do you have some details about it?
You can a little bit. I just want to, you know, it's November 7 at 8:00 AM. It is at the high school field house. So we can have maximum social distancing like we did in June. We will have tents outside for those who feel more comfortable outside. We will have tents with heaters. And so people will be comfortable instead of air conditioning. We'll be heating the outside instead of air conditioning the inside. There will be an area in the inside that will be a mask-free zone for those people that have medical conditions and can't wear a mask. Other than that, masks will be required, as we did in the last town meeting. And it does start promptly at 8:00 AM. There are 11 articles. And we will hopefully go through them. A couple of things that I did want to point out is that already on the website is the Report of Appropriated Funds Expenditures and Balances. This is Article One, and this will go through every single expenditure that every department did last year, as we do every year, and it breaks down every department, almost line by line. So please take a look at that ahead of time. There will be copies available when you're there. But, you know, if people can look at it, if they have questions, I'm very happy to talk to them about it. We will also have online, hopefully by the, later this week, we just have to finish up the regular town meeting recommendation book, which will have each article. And the articles are written in a legal way, and that's already been posted. And we'll have each motion that we're doing, complete with any dollar amounts. So that will be on the website, hopefully by the end of the week, as we just tighten and, you know, dot our i's and cross our t's and finish that up. So there will be a lot of information there. We are certainly available for questions ahead of time, at any time. So we expect to have a robust discussion like we always do. There will be some items that will need two-thirds votes. So we will ask people to raise their hands high and let them be counted. And everyone knows the drill that's been there. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Absolutely. Thanks, Steve. Does anyone have any questions with regard to town meeting or how we're going to handle it? Ed?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Mayo. Could you maybe just touch a little bit upon what is planned? I know that in, in June, we were concerned about making sure that we had it cooled. And I don't think the temperature is as much an issue as it is just air circulation generally, especially in a space, just because we're learning more about COVID and how it spreads. So if anyone that's watching that might, you know, have concerns, could you perhaps just address, you know, what we're doing to address those, aside from the outdoor space?
Okay. Well, the, the inside is a huge space with a huge ceiling. So there's already a lot of, lot of room in there. We do have doors on both sides that can be open to allow air to flow through there completely. We're not going to, again, worry about keeping it cool. I don't think we will anyway. This year, if we do, that's going to be, we have maybe larger problems. So that'll be available. And there is plenty of room in there, those that went there before, that people can be completely dispersed. And in the stands as well, people can go up into the stand. So we will have ample room for everybody. And last year, it worked out very well. I think people felt as comfortable as they could during, you know, a kind of a crazy hot time. And we had that place, you know, cooled off, so it wasn't too bad. But it did start to get a little warm late in the afternoon. So hopefully we won't be there this time. But there'll be airflow. They'll be fine. It'll be, it should be, it should be okay.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none. Thank you so much, Steve. Item number eight, outdoor dining. And this is, we, I, we need to vote on this, I believe.
Yes.
Now, right, a vote for the extension of outdoor dining through 60 days after the ending of the state of emergency COVID order number 50. Could I have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Ed. Any discussion? And I think I'm going to jump in on the discussion. Steve, I talked to you about this before, but I do think we should reevaluate some of the spaces that people have and maybe others might need more spaces. But there are some restaurants that are taking up quite a bit of space that don't seem to need it. And I think that's a good conversation for you or Joe Conway, GPW, whoever he assigns, and the business owners, not to take the dining away, but to maybe just reevaluate it.
Right. We'll be going to every business that is enjoying public spaces. And some may not want to continue because of the weather. Some, quite frankly, don't need all that space. So we'll be narrowing that and working with them. And we'll be doing that all this week. It's important that we do extend this, however, because for two reasons. Number one is that a lot of businesses, they have certain zoning restrictions. They have to have so many parking spaces and what have you. This allows them, if it's on their property or if they're not using street property, to, if, to not meet those parking requirements. They're not getting a lot of cars anyway. The other item is that if you have a liquor license, your liquor license is only for your premises. Okay? So this allows that liquor license to be available in that outdoor dining space. Two very important items that the governor put in his order that, or else we couldn't do it. So we'll be meeting with them. We will ask them to, we will extend the time in there. If they're in outdoor spaces that town owns for the temporary license agreement that we granted them. Also with the caveat, if that we get hit with a big snowstorm, we may have to move those out of there.
Sure.
Move them out. But hopefully, we can get a couple more months in the season and then we'll reevaluate.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. I'm Julie. I see your hand up.
Um, absolutely. I'm all in favor of extending this. And along the same lines as, and I also just wonder whether we can't look at some space that is not necessarily attached to a certain business, but it's more open to everyone. A bit like Melrose is doing. I mean, they've gone the complete opposite where I think all their space is open to everyone. But even if we just had, you know, a few chairs or a few picnic tables maybe around, perhaps it's more something to think of the spring. We're still there. But I like the idea of just kind of more open parking space, rather than everything being assigned to a business. Just something to think about. I'm not sure how logistics.
Thank you. Jonathan, Jonathan and then Paul.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, likewise, I agree with, with Counselor Smith-Galvin that, you know, I definitely am in favor of extending this. I did just have a related question, Mr. Mayo. I believe that at some point, there was some possibility of having some grant funding available for some of the restaurants and businesses related to purchasing things like heat lamps and sort of items like that, that make, you know, dining outside in November and December a little more palatable than it usually is. I don't know if, if we've heard any updates on that through things that we may have available through the town or through other programs available through the state or federal governments?
Well, we, we did put in the first round and did not get it. I was told that we did not get it because we moved too quickly and had places for them. So that kind of made me upset. But there is a government program that just came out that is a direct grant to the businesses. So it's not just through the town. And I will be meeting with them and helping them apply for that as well. Because it'd be great for them to get it on their own. And I think Governor Baker just, I think it was $71 million. I forget what he put forward for this. So yes, we'll be working with them on that too.
Great. Thank you. And Madam Chair, if I could actually ask Julia a question through you.
Sure.
Yeah, I haven't, I actually haven't been to Melrose. So do they have sort of common spaces that they've set up for outdoor dining? Or how, could you talk a little bit about how they've, they've set it up there?
Yeah. So what they've done is they've chosen spaces that are not necessarily right in front of a restaurant. So they might be more in front of a retail shop or something and are using the parking space. It's not the sidewalk. And the, the chairs are owned by the community. And so anybody, you can get your Starbucks and then walk, you know, a couple hundred feet and sit down, just like somebody from the pizza shop could walk a couple hundred feet. So basically, it's shared seating, just not in front of a certain restaurant. And their, their bike group actually built a very nice, a very nice planters. Now, they did get the shared streets funding. I don't know whether it came through that. There's a nice video on Patch if anybody wants to see it. But I've seen like kids sitting in front of VFW, for example. That's where another one is set up. So it's just a little bit of a, of a more community feel than, you know, I was in Creations the other day, grabbed a coffee and came out and sat on the benches. And it's a wonderful way of the benches to sit on, but nobody was sitting in front of the, in the chairs in front of brothers. And it would've been nice to go and kind of sit there at a table, rather than trying to have a conversation distance on a bench.
So they've almost done like little sort of parklets rather than...
Oh, yeah. And Ruth probably knows very much more about it.
Yeah, I can address it. Put my Melrose hat on. So the, the purpose of those, and I think they're called parklets.
Yeah.
And the purpose is different than the restaurants that have a liquor license, that obviously have very stringent requirements of access. It's really meant for the pizza places, the coffee shops, to make it more welcoming for people to be able to just sit outside and have a cup of coffee and a donut or a bagel or a piece of pizza or whatever. And they're on, they're, they're also, they're not only on Main Street, but there's, West Emerson has one. I can't remember who else. But anyway, they've been very, they have been very well received. And, but it's owned by the city and it's on city parking spaces.
Great. Great. Thanks, Ruth.
Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, I agree and I will support the vote to allow the extension on the voting, I mean, on the parking. Can, what is the current rule regarding tents? And how many sides can be fully closed? Can they have the entire tent enclosed? Or do they need one side open, two side open?
That's, so that comes under the DP, well, actually, DPH or DLA, I don't know whose guidance it is. But anyway, so for outdoor dining, to be considered outdoor dining, 50% of the perimeter needs to be open.
So two sides of a tent would have to be open, pretty much?
50%.
Okay, so would, would the council be adverse to letting others put tents up other than just the one establishment that we currently have? Is that something that we wish to explore with them? Because for them to just to put outside heaters, I'm not sure if that would work if they didn't have some sort of area that would be able to at least deflect or maintain the heat. So I'm just thinking that we're going into November, December with this right now. And it might get a little counterproductive to have something of this offered to them. Who wants to sit outside if it's going to be 32 degrees out?
Well, we can also look, Paul, we can also look into how, how you can make outdoor dining into indoor dining. You know, with having all sides down and heaters, which I'm sure the fire department would want to be involved in.
So that would meet the requirements, current requirements, the COVID requirements, all sides down?
Well, then that's not outdoor dining. That's indoor dining. And it would follow under the indoor dining, dining guidelines.
Okay, okay. That's, that's, that's good to know then.
But I, I'm not sure how practical that is from a heating perspective. I mean, that's definitely a fire department.
Having, having heaters under tents is not a good idea.
So, I mean, between carbon monoxide buildup and...
No, I understand. It was just a concern as far as that's... I just think that the restaurants are going to be put on, into a greater position if the COVID numbers continue to climb and the weather changes for the colder. It just, it's the impact that we're going to see being placed on them in not having the business, the ability to, to, to be in business. How's that sound? So that's where my concerns are coming from. And I just, those are my only concerns at this current time. But thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ruth.
Thanks, Paul. Ed and then Jonathan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we first addressed this and approved it, my understanding is we're giving a good amount of latitude to both Town Minister Mayo and DPW to work out the, the most customized workable solutions on a case-by-case basis for businesses. So I would just suggest that we keep this, we continue to keep this... So I would just suggest that we keep this, we continue to keep this broad and open ended for Mr. Mayo's office and DPW and the fire department as appropriate to be able to customize a workable solution for each of the businesses that are interested in taking part. I think that's, affording that flexibility is the best that we can do to try to help promote this. I don't know what each business's needs will be. I know that speaking with businesses, they have very different needs. So the broader we can be and then defer that to Mr. Mayo to be able to work out with them directly, I think is probably the best that we should and can be doing as a council. And so I fully support giving as much latitude as the law provides for, so that we can do that.
Great. Thank you, Ed. Jonathan, then Maureen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just actually a quick question related to Counselor Janaco's point. You know, my assumption is under the, under what we allowed when we allowed Order 35 to be adopted. You know, that doesn't sort of freeze the restaurants that have used that outdoor space. Meaning if any other restaurant that hasn't used that space does come to the town and ask to set up a tent, you know, assuming that it kind of falls within the guidance that we set forward and assuming that there's not a public safety issue, they'd still be able to do that. Is that correct, Mr. Mayo?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Maureen.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to echo what everyone said and the parklets also in Melrose is, is Steve, when you, it's so great to have the conversations with individual businesses. But I think also to look at, you know, the smaller pizza place or the Thai food restaurants that are ice cream places. And if you did something so selfishly thinking of Greenwood, if like outside of the Greenwood School, if there were some benches there and I could take my sub or my Chinese food and go to picnic bench, same as like Meltharbs and Jades if there was somewhere down there. So, you know, it's great to have the individual conversations. But I think if we can kind of think collectively, because I think that's, you know, what Ruth was talking about or Julie, that you can't go sit at Brothers if you get coffee from Creations. But if we had areas that were, you know, town seating like the benches, but if we had them in other places too, I just think that's a collective way to have people sit outside when they can, when it is not snowing.
Great. Thanks, Maureen. And I also think that in this part of the country or the whole country, we have to get used to maybe eating with our coats and hats on. It's done in other parts of the country. It's certainly done in Europe, so.
We eat the most ice cream of anywhere in the world in New England.
Right.
But I think we eat that outside all season long.
So seeing no more discussion, I'll have, we've already had a motion in a second. So roll call vote to, just to remind folks, extend outdoor dining through 60 days after the ending of the state of emergency COVID order number 50. Myself, yes. Peter? Julie?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Paul? Ed?
Hi.
Paul's shaking his head. Maureen?
Yes.
Excellent. Unanimous. Thank you. Now, COVID-19 update. Shall I send this right to Ruth, Steve, or are you gonna?
I'd say send it right to Ruth.
Okay.
Then if necessary.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Steve. Well, let's see. Numbers are not looking great. Steve and I looked at our numbers this afternoon, this morning. And there's a strong likelihood we're going to be red again, which would mean three weeks in a row and would mean that we would be required to go back to step one. That would, if we go red again, that would be, the map gets changed now on Thursdays. If that's the case, then going back to step one, phase three does not take effect until Monday. Asterisk. Let me explain a little bit about what the numbers mean and what they don't mean. So the state looks at the numbers Saturday. So on this Thursday, they're going to be looking at numbers from Saturday. And I don't know if it's at eight in the morning, 10:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon. It does make a difference because those numbers change continually all day, plus and minus. You know, we find duplicates and we get rid of the duplicates. Or there's a college student who's attributed to their home address that needs to get moved to where they really like. So those numbers change. So, and I don't know exactly what time they look at it on Saturday. So as a rough estimate, you know, I look at Friday night's number. So that's really the number that they're going off of. And then you count back 14 days from there. So it's not going to match up when we give daily numbers. That way, if you're counting back from the last daily number, you have to count back from last Saturday. And when we did that today, it was not pretty. So this is the heads up. You know, I could be wrong and I hope I'm wrong, but I think we should be prepared for being red for the third time. And I've heard a lot of discussion attributing it to one long-term care facility. That is part of it, but it's definitely not all of it. We have, we have a lot of individual addresses that are now have at least one person diagnosed or testing positive. The difference now is that it's not just one person at that address. It's two, three, sometimes four people at that address as it goes through the household. So one address could end up increasing our number by three or four. And it doesn't take a lot of those during the course of the week to get up to 10 or 20 or whatever. So, so we've talked about doing some additional health education and communication. So to that end, after this meeting, we, if you look on the website, and actually, I don't know, Steve, who do I ask to put it up?
Brian's going to pull that right up for us.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
So I don't know how to make it go down. Can I do that?
You'll do it.
Yeah, good. So on, we have our, you know, the state has a dashboard. We have our own dashboard now. So we're starting the dashboard in July, July 1st, even though, you know, we have case counts going back to March. But you get the point as to what's happening with our curve. It's pretty self-explanatory. These are, the last few weeks have gone up dramatically every week. Again, one of that, part of that is a cluster, but a lot of it is just regular people. So another question that we've, and we will continue to update that. So the, we've had 40 deaths confirmed. That is a little bit of an undercount because especially in the beginning, there were households and couples where one passed from COVID. The other one passed, was never officially diagnosed with COVID. So that number is going to be a little less. And then the active cases are the ones, people who are still in isolation. They're still within 10 days of their test. So I, you know, so clearly, most people are blue. They've recovered. So it gives you an idea. So the other thing people are asking, and I know there's a lot of questions about, are schools. And so we want to give out information, but information that does not make any way of people being able to identify who. So what we're going to do is going to post it by month. So obviously, we're in the middle of October, so it's not the full month. And we're dividing it into students and staff slash teachers. And as you can see, we, we haven't had any slash that teachers. But again, let me remind you, we have staff and teachers that don't live in Wakefield. So if they're positive, they're not part of our case count. They're in part of the case count of whatever city or town they live in. So the other question somebody's going to ask me is why is that number, hold on, hold on, don't go fast. The other question somebody's going to ask is why is our number different than the number showing on DESI website? The reason for that is DESI only publishes students and staff who are in school. So if you're teaching remotely or studying remotely, if you, if that person is positive, that gets reported by the superintendent to DESI. But it does not get included in their published number. So it can be confusing. I think it's confusing, but it's the way it is. So again, we have a couple of, we have a couple of private schools in Wakefield. If there's a positive student at one of those schools, that is not included. The other thing that's not included are Wakefield youth that attend private schools, out of town, Malden Catholic, Bishop Fenwick, Austin Prep. That's not included in the Wakefield Public Schools number. So it's data. So what can I tell you? Data is data. You have to really know the ins and outs of the data when you're looking at it. I'm trying to address the questions that I've been hearing. And if there's other questions that we can adapt the dashboard for, certainly, you know, happy to do it. The positivity rates, we took our surrounding communities. This, this data is right off of the state's dashboard. You can see there's a wide variety on how many people have gotten tested. Wakefield is, a lot of people have been tested in the last 14 days. That's great. We also have almost the highest positivity rate. Some of those people who got tested are household members of a confirmed positive. So they're more likely to also be a positive. So to give credit where credit's due, we stole this from Winchester. But we can certainly tweak it more as to what information the public or town council is interested in. And, you know, add more explanation where people feel it's a little confusing. Jen and Steve and I worked on this today to, so we could have it live tonight. So I'm hoping that giving more data probably will create more questions and answers, but it does give in some information. And Steve and I did go through the difference between step one and step two. If that happens on Monday, and it, it does not affect Wakefield very much. As far as the business sector goes, it will really only affect, we could think of one retail clothing store that has fitting rooms that would have to go back to not using fitting rooms. But a lot of the other venues that are affected, we don't have in Wakefield, like arcades and driving schools and museums and things like that. And for the restaurants, unless I've missed something, we don't have any restaurants that have brass or woodwind instruments playing right now. So that, that should be fairly minimal. The outdoor gatherings at public settings goes from 100 to 50. The private settings don't change. So we're trying to anticipate what would be the difference. But again, we're not allowing walks at the, you know, the organized walks at the lakes or any of those. So I, it should, the impact should be fairly minimal. But it does give us the opportunity to be putting the word out even more. We'll be passing out, thank you for wearing a mask sticker tomorrow night at our flu clinic. And we'll pass them out everywhere we possibly can. The kiosk will be changed from election info to COVID-19 info as soon as the election's over. Steve, did you want to talk about the videos?
Yeah, we also are going to start doing, and I welcome any of the counselors that want to jump in on this, too. Just let me know. Some very impromptu meetings every Friday with WCAT. We will, you know, talk about what's going on and enforce, remind people about the importance of wearing a mask, et cetera. We're going to put the message boards out again with a kind of a 4W theme that we're also working with the chamber on. Wash your hands, wear a mask, watch your distance, Wakefield pride. So all of these things will be out there, kiosk videos. We're also, we'll use the billboard on Route 128. And videos, like I said, to really try to remind people, because I do think there is a little bit of adherence fatigue, fatigue to lack of a better word. You know, and we'll try to remind people as, even as they walk around the lake. Most people are pretty good, but you know, people need to be reminded all the time. And maybe this was a good wake up call for everybody.
Yeah, I do want to also mention, because the schools are always a hot topic, that the schools are not spreading, not, and I'm not talking about Wakefield, but now that schools have been in session, especially, you know, in other parts of the country where they start even earlier, there's no data that's showing that COVID is spreading through schools. There's also international studies that have been done. And schools seem to be one of the safer places for kids and teachers to be at this point. So again, I'm going to reiterate my recommendation. The Board Health, Board of Health hasn't met specifically on this, but my personal recommendation is not to change anything with the schools. The red is an important caution for the community, but it is, it has, there's nothing attributed to the schools.
Thank you, Ruth.
I think we'll also be looking, if I can jump in, Madam.
Sure, of course.
Certain areas where there have been larger gatherings. And one of which has been, you know, sadly, the dog park. I mean, I guess someone had the bright idea to decide that maybe they should have a Halloween party there last week and dress up all the dogs and the, and the patrons and the owners, I guess. And I think they had very many people there. No permission was asked or offered. So we are most likely going to kind of ratchet that down a little bit to really lower the amount of people in there. And we'll, and put more information. There are signs that says masks should be worn, but we'll upgrade those and everything to make sure that, everywhere we can, that people are, you know, reminding them to follow the protocol.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah, I drove by that. It was bad. It was absolutely packed. Ruth, I know that there was discussion with regard to counting the numbers if, if, if a bunch of numbers came from a very self-contained unit like we had. For that not to color the town as if it was a widespread event. Is that, does the state take any consideration?
Yeah, they do, actually. And, sorry. Yes, so that has been a very big discussion on our conference calls for several weeks. And the state actually did make a change. So if you look. Um, so if you look at the state map, there are asterisks next to towns. And, but the criteria, and I don't know why there isn't an asterisk next to Wakefield. And I, I would have to talk to one of the epidemiologists and run through numbers with them. But the criteria is that 10 cases have to be from one facility and that number needs to be at least 30% of your total.
Okay.
And again, it depends on which seven days and which 14 days you look at. I don't know, I, every which way I count, it looks like we qualify. So um Karen and I need to get an Epi on the phone and drill down to figure out why we don't have an asterisk.
Okay. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
So, yeah, that's their number.
Okay.
Our arithmetic must be different than their arithmetic.
Um, Steve, at some point, if the, in, with the weather getting cold, this might cure itself. But I know we're not allowing um, walks around the lake. People are still having them. They're still having organized walks with wearing T-shirts and probably not being as careful mask-wearing as they should. It's, if we see an uptick in that, we can think about the parking situation again.
Yes, we, we've actually reached out to a lot of the um walkers and uh, some of them have been great about, you know, telling people virtual means virtual, it means in your neighborhood. It doesn't mean meeting around the lake again. Um, some have been not so good. We've also, um, some frankly are a little bit sneaky and they set up shop. Um, not in a, not in an area where they would be maybe seen, not, not in an area that maybe is um town owned by the town of Wakefield. Um, but uh, our police have been alerted and they've told them, no, you can't have that table. You can't have those drinks that you're giving out. So we're trying, we're trying.
Right. No, great. Thank you, Steve. I'm Paul. I see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question in, in regards to numbers. Uh, within the town of Wakefield, is there a number of people that can gather at one time in one location out there now? And does it also apply to how many people can gather in a residential area? Is there a restriction um, being in phase three right now?
Yeah, so during step two outdoors on public property, it's a hundred. If we go to step one, it'll be 50. On private property, it's 50 in step one and step two.
Okay, so public property would be uh, the, the lake, the upper common.
Anything that the town owns.
Anything that, and then of course, anything private would be non-public. Okay, I got it. No, that's good. Thank you very much for the information. Thank you.
Um, Ed, I see your hand up.
Madam Chair, um, just a few questions for you, Ruth, on that. So understanding the numbers, and we have 445 confirmed cases since July 1, right?
No, no, 445 cases since we started counting.
Since, okay, so it's not since.
Starts, the chart starts on July 1st.
Okay.
But it doesn't start at zero.
Got it. All right. So that number is actually, that's the total number of cases for the entire pandemic then. All right. And of that, um, you said we had 40, 40 deaths then. So just, I guess, to provide some context to folks who see that, and that seems rather alarming, because that's almost, that's basically 9%. Um, can you provide some context to, you know, the, the majority of those deaths?
All of them have been over 65.
And have most of them been comorbidities too?
Uh, um, they've all been elderly. That's their comorbidity. Sorry, I'm heading towards that, so I hate to say it.
And then the, the 73 cases that we've had in the last 14 days, and I know you said it wasn't, you know, quite, you know, um,
Half of those are from the one location.
Yeah, that was my question. So.
Approximately.
Approximately half is from that. And um, do we know, are we working directly with them to try to mitigate um, uh, further spread, or do we have a sense of kind of where, where they're trending with cases in that facility?
Yeah, of course. We talk to them every day and they're in lockdown.
So how, how are they as far as this ki- case count goes then? I mean, is, is, is it now under control? Is it continuing to rise? Because I think, you know, that, that's, that's obviously a, a major driver of our numbers here, but I want to make sure that we have solid context for, for folks watching.
Well, Karen Cronin, our public health nurse, talks to them at least once, at least once every day. So she's working very closely with them. Um, but you're, you're talking about, you're talking about a population that may not cognitively be able to do social distancing or understand mask-wearing. Um, it's a tough population.
I guess what I gotta get though is, is are the numbers continuing to rise within that one facility, say, for example? Or have they been able?
Continuing to get cases, but not lots, not huge numbers of cases.
And have we given any thought, um, I know that we, obviously, were talking about town meeting earlier. Have we given any thought to shifting that to, to Landrigan instead? Um, I know that we will be spaced, socially spaced, but it's still, you know, an indoor space. And, and I know, you know, aerosol and, and droplets and things airborne and the like. Um, you know, if, if we can be out there to watch a football game is, you know, I, I don't expect town meeting is going to go very long. Is that something that we've at least considered in light of where we are, you know, with our numbers there?
I think that's a Steve question.
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, we, we did advertise it for the high school field house. It worked out well before. I think Landrigan is a tough in, in and out up that hill. It's hard to people to get in there. Um, I don't know, I, 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 my feeling is that the field house we can socially distance quite well in, so.
I, I get that, but it just, it just, more, more the air circulation again is more the issue than the, the distancing piece of.
And we will have the outdoor spots for people that feel more comfortable, so.
All right. Well, well, thank you, Ruth, and, and the whole department's help, help for all of your work on this, certainly.
Thanks, Ed. Um, Maureen and then Jonathan.
So I want to thank Ruth and Steve, and I know you met with Jen McDonald and your whole team, Steve, for working on this. I think it's, I think um, it sounds great. And I thank you, Ruth, for kind of explaining the numbers and the schools as someone who got a lot of panic texts and emails this weekend. I appreciate you walking through that. And then just a couple of asks of Steve. I think the communicate, the education and the communication plan is just so imperative. And I know I love the idea of a video, sign me up. But um, also, social media and the item, and I think, uh, you know, let's think about banners and let's think about every, like, every communication tools. Um, you know, I saw the email that the people with kids in the school system get, which is a really good email. But like, the last communication we really did as a town was October 14th, which frankly was just a long time ago to not have kind of an update of, of how it's going and what people can do to remain safe. And then just the other thing, as, as, you know, we're having town meeting. Um, and we all took part in distributing the mask, Steve. And you said, I remember you saying at our last meeting that we actually wouldn't get money to do that again. But I worry about a lot of people, a five mask now lasting for eight months. And I, are there options for people getting more masks?
We do, we do have a stockpile of masks if people need them.
Right. So I think advertising that as well and maybe checking in with kind of the seniors. Um, again, like the most, the most vulnerable, but you know, I, I don't know what schools are doing, but I just, I know, like, it's also an economic thing of who can get mask and who can't. So maybe, you know, advertising that they're available if people need them. Um, and then I just, I just think in every opportunity, talking about wearing a mask, washing your hands and social distancing, because I, I understand that'll, you know, helpful to know that it'll be red for another week. I just, you know, as each week goes and the numbers keep on increasing, it's just, it's going to cause more panic. And, and, you know, it's, it's not, it's not okay to have 40 deaths. And I, you know, I'm concerned about every single family member that wasn't able to grieve with their loved ones. So we, we need to do better to, to stop the spread.
Thanks, Maureen. Um, Jonathan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And uh, you know, Ruth, thank you so much again to you and, and your team for just the continuing tireless work. I mean, I, you know, I, I know it's been a long haul since March and I, I think we're unfortunately in for a long fall and winter as well. So, you know, thank you for all the, the, the hours and time and effort that, that you're putting in. Um, and just to, uh, to one point and one question that I wanted to raise. Uh, first, in relation to town meeting, um, I do know one of the things that the school department and the DPW did was engage in a consultant who was looking at airflow in the school buildings. Um, and I, I don't know, uh, Steve, if that's something that we'd be able to uh, get some information specific to the field house, just to make sure that from an airflow perspective, um, you know, that that's adequate for a, a, a group the size that's, uh, that's there. My assumption is that it is, uh, just given I, I know that, uh, you know, the consultant did a pretty thorough job. And uh, you know, the school department, the DPW has done some remediation. But, you know, maybe just for, for the benefit of the council and for the public at large, if, if we can make some of that information available, I, I think that would be, would be helpful. Um, the second question that I wanted to ask is sort of related uh, somewhat to kind of thinking about where we are in the reopening phase. And um, you know, certainly, you know, I understand that based on kind of the state's guidance for step one versus step through two of phase three, there's not a whole lot of difference. Um, you know, absolutely agree, but you know, Ruth, with your recommendation around keeping the schools open, both given the limited amount of spread and the fact that that is really important educationally and from an equity perspective for kids. But I, I guess the question that I have is, are there any other things that we are doing as a town right now that um, we should think about maybe taking a step back on? So um, you know, Steve, you mentioned the dog park as one example. Um, are we permitting use on our fields for, you know, either youth or recreational sports activities that maybe we should reexamine? You know, we talked about parking by the lake is one thing. Are there things happening at the Maricall Civic Center that maybe we should, you know, look at sort of what's there? Um, I, I don't know if, I, I don't know if Steve, Ruth, if you have a sense as to sort of any areas where it might behoove us to be proactive about maybe thinking of taking a, a, a little bit of a step back on reopening?
So we, Steve and I have had that discussion. Um, neither of us have come up with an answer because the town is already not allowing block parties, not allowing the lake, not allowing things that theoretically could happen with the guidelines, but the town's not allowing already. Um, and we're, you know, we're just doing it kind of from the town administrator's office. The board of health could make rules stricter than the state. Um, I, but at this point, we would be doing things, you know, that would really hurt business that I don't think we're interested in doing it at this point.
I think one thing we can do is look at the um, uh, you know, the, the sporting events and things like that. You know, are there, are they drawing too many people? Um, some groups have been very good about, you know, um, uh, only, you know, one parent per child. They're really trying to do the right thing there. But we'll take another look at that. Um, mainly for the civic center, we're only using that, I believe, for the after-school program. Um, and I've turned over, I've turned down a lot of angry people that want to do things there, but I felt that was right. Um, I'm surprised you guys haven't gotten many calls on that. I said, I'm, I'm the bad guy. Um, so I think, well, we'll relook at it, but we've really tried to be proactive and not allow any of these events. And it's, it's hard. I mean, things that, traditions that we've had for years, you know, forever, people are not, but, you know.
Yep. No, thank, thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, I, you know, just anecdotally, my sense is, um, in, in Ruth, I think you, you said it perfectly. There, there is a, a lot of fatigue um, that I think people feel. And, you know, my sense just from seeing what I see is that I, I, I think a lot of what we're seeing in terms of, you know, the spread is just partly driven by our own relaxation of our own practices and, and being a little bit more comfortable, um, you know, being around people. But I, I just want to make sure that, you know, as a town, you know, we don't sort of turn a blind eye to any opportunities that we have to try to reinforce, you know, uh, good practices around social distancing. So, you know, A, we don't find ourselves in a place where our infection rate continues to grow, maybe more than it, than it needs to. Uh, and B, so that we don't find ourselves in a place where we have to make the harder decisions down the line of, you know, restricting our abilities, ability for businesses to open. You know, looking at going backwards around school reopening and, you know, doing some of those things that, you know, I think at the end of the day, you know, would have much more significant consequences than, you know, telling an amateur baseball team that, you know, they can't use the field for a game or that they've got to limit the, the number of spectators that they have.
Well, I, I think as some people may have seen the article in the Globe, but the fact is, most of the time, or at least half of the time, we don't know how that initial person gets positive. When spouses and kids go positive, yeah, we know where that came from. But the initial person, you know, un- unless we know of a particular party or they work in a high-risk occupation, um, we don't know. I mean, I wish, I wish there was an easy answer to say, you know, 50% of our new cases are coming from going out to dinner or neighborhood parties or whatever. But we don't have that information. So, and, and we don't control, you know, all aspects of people's lives, nor do we want to. Um, I think we need to do some adult peer pressure. So when your neighbor says, come on, I'm over, I'm having a party, you say, you know what, I really appreciate that and I appreciate the opportunity, but I, I really am keeping socially distant. It's not an easy thing to say.
Um, Julie.
Um, well, I mean, of course, thank you, everything you're doing. Um, Steve, have we, are we using a reverse 911 at all? I mean, I think when we go red, even though obviously there's kind of different guidelines, but I think people understand when it's red. And I'm wondering, kind of like the days we know we go red, whether we don't, you know, do some proactive, you know, wear red and remember to um, take all the precautions.
We have talked about it. Um, I'll tell you that we get as many angry calls about doing reverse 911 than doing reverse 911. People will say, why did you tell us? I know we're red. I, I see the news. You know, what am I going to do? Um, I'll continue to talk that about Jen. I, I don't know if that would make any more difference than the other item things we're going to do. But um, we can certainly consider that.
Yeah, just, just something to think about. And if we're doing them anyway, for things like town meeting or voting.
Uh, we won't do it.
The reason we can't tag on a message.
Yeah.
Um, and then I, I really like what Ruth, you just said about kind of the standing up to peer pressure. Um, I'm really worried about teen holiday, uh, Halloween parties this weekend, having a teen. Um, and uh, yeah, I, I think, you know, maybe Jen can help us do some messaging to parents. And it's very tough to keep these teenagers kind of in, in, at home. So I don't know, that's just maybe another audience that the schools focusing on, but I think we need to think about.
Great. Thank you, Julie. Um, Ruth, thank you so much. And I spoke too soon earlier. I, I, you're one of our best people we have in this town and I, and I can't.
I wasn't going to say anything, Ed.
Oh, I, hey, you and I go back to board of health days, Ruth Clay. I was there when you were hired. It was the best, again, one of the best hires we have ever made in this town. And we are so lucky in a pandemic, in a, a serious situation that we have you. So thank you so much.
I appreciate it, but I, I really want to make sure, understand that our public health nurse works
Yes.
seven days a week, literally. Um, the office gets unbelievable amounts of calls. Our inspectors go out on complaints every day and dealing with angry people. So um, it's really the entire department. And I know it sounds trite, but it's, it's really true.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Um, all right, fingers, fingers crossed on those numbers. Um, okay, moving on to item number 10. We have a gift, a gift acceptance, request from the library to approve gifts from various donors with thanks. Motion and second? So, so moved by um, Ed, seconded by Jonathan or Maureen? Well, fine. Um, any discussion? Vote. My, my, oh, Ed?
I just wanted to, I think, point out, you know, normally these, these gifts are of a smaller magnitude. This is um,
This is a $25,000 gift from the Constance C. Murray Estate. And so I want to send a special, you know, thanks for this very sizable gift that will make a significant impact on our library and services. So thank you, you know, to the estate for this gift.
Ed, thank you so much for pointing that out. I hadn't noted that. So thank you. That's absolutely correct. Thank you with great gratitude and thanks for that gift. Voting to accept it myself, yes. Peter? Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Maureen?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to announcements. Do any folks have announcements they'd like to add? I can start. I don't see the hands going up too quickly. So a couple of announcements, or just points to bring up that didn't, didn't seem to fit someplace. I was speaking with the food pantry. In 2019, they, they helped 617 individual families. So far, 2020, that number is 821. So obviously a huge jump and we're not through the year yet. So I would remind people that if there's ever a donation to give to in Wakefield, that is, if you're thinking of it, that is a place to give it, since it's directly going into help our own residents. They also still have their auction live. I think it's towards the, the end of it. But if folks want to go on to the food pantry, Wakefield Food Pantry, Facebook or webpage, please, you can go on and participate in that auction. I also wanted to mention that we have kept, and we know this, but perhaps not everyone in town knows it, that we have kept our AAA bond rating, which is pretty amazing in this kind of economy. And just the standard emporers report that spoke to the AAA mentioned several points as to why we kept it. One is a strong economy. Very significantly is the strong management of our financial policies, which I think certainly we can give credit to Steve for the FinCom and certainly our work in supporting what they do. Balanced operating results, a strong budgetary flexibility, which I think Steve has always talked about, the flexibility that we have. Very strong liquidity, strong debt and contingent liability position, strong institutional framework, which again is something that we've built up over the past several years. So, you know, in these times, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing for us to maintain that will save our residents, I think a couple hundred thousand at least, Steve, with regard to payments. Do you have anything to add to that?
On that one? No. A great teamwork with, you know, Kevin Gill and John McCarthy and Bon Council and the support. Worked really well.
Excellent. Thanks, Steve. And just finally for me, I have assigned my vice chair, Julie Smith Galvin, who volunteered. We've been talking about looking into committee documents, committee guidelines to have something written a little more cohesively across the board, and also to give committees guidance as to what they should be doing, even when it comes to Zoom protocol and etiquette. So Julie's going to be working on that towards the end of the year, and I'm sure she'll come back to us for some questions and comments. So thank you, Julie, for jumping into that one. Jonathan, I see your hand up.
Thank you. Just a couple of things that I wanted to bring up. One, just as an update from the planning board. So we did, I believe now, two meetings ago, if I'm remembering correctly, refer to them two citizen petitions related to zoning by law changes that the petitioners wanted to bring forward at town meeting. I did want to make sure the board heard and the public knew that the, the planning board did meet last week and actually did schedule a, a public hearing for those two, those two items. There was some question as to whether there would be the time for them to do so before town meeting. And, you know, I, I think, you know, there was a lot of good discussion in the planning board as to even if they do have this hearing, whether they still have enough time to have really a full and holistic discussion about the items. But there, there will be a public hearing. That'll be November 5th at 7 o'clock. So that's just the Thursday before town meeting. Counselor Smith Galvin mentioned Halloween coming up on Saturday. And certainly I know that there's been a lot of, you know, chatter on social media around, you know, what's happening for Halloween. You know, I just wanted to kind of bring it up in this setting, just to sort of remind folks in the public, just to be, be careful and be safe. You know, we certainly do want to make sure that we're reinforcing good social distancing practices for Halloween. But, you know, also want to make sure that as people are driving through town on Saturday night, that they're being careful. You know, because it's a Saturday, I think a lot of kids might be out a little bit later than they would when it's a little bit darker. Because of social distancing, there might be smaller groups of kids than the larger groups. And it's, you know, harder to see a smaller group sometimes. So just a plea to everyone to please, you know, take it safe, take it slow and be careful at all times, but especially, especially this weekend. Finally, just a reminder, it was great to see the two members of the Brownie troop here to remind us about voting. But just a reminder that election day is a week from tomorrow. There are still plenty of early voting days left in the town clerk's office. And Betsy Sheeran, I think, have done a really great job at organizing that. And hope everyone in town who's eligible to do so will get out and vote before, between now and next Tuesday. And then take that spirit of civic engagement into town meeting next Saturday as well.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks.
I had wanted to mention, and Maureen reminded me that Jeff Clap's dad passed away. And Jeff, being a wonderful member of the community and working at the library, Mr. Clap's owned Colonial Spa. Or his uncle or did, was it Mr. Clap's? It was Mr. Clap's that owned Colonial Spa. And I remember as a little girl going there and, you know, we'd meet after school and we would get our ice creams. And just especially, you know, being half Greek myself, I really want to send my love and best wishes to that family. I know they had him for an awfully long time and he was a wonderful man. And I know the council sends that as well. So thank you. Maureen?
Just a couple of updates. One, as we talk about being safe and keeping healthy, there is a family flu clinic tomorrow at the high school from 5 to 7. So if you have not gotten your flu shot yet, great opportunity to go get it and, and at least fight this flu that's going around. Also to echo what Counselor Chine said about early voting. And I do actually just want to recognize Steve and Betsy on making the process safe for everyone as they go into town hall and early vote. So I've seen the lines I used, I voted already, did not get a sticker, but I used the ballot box outside, which is also a beautiful thing. Thank you for that, Steve. But just, you know, people are going into town hall and early on, under Steve's leadership, people take their temperature. You can't go in and your town hall has not become a cluster. So we're doing something right there. And so I just want to remind people that you can go do that if you want to feel safer. And then also, as Jonathan mentioned, Halloween is coming up. And I mentioned this last week and Julie will maybe have more details, but we are going to have a pumpkin drop at the four elementary schools on November 2nd. So the, the day before election day, Tuesday after Halloween, you can take your, one of your pumpkins, your pumpkins, as many as you have, and drop them off at one of the library. I mean, one of the elementary schools, so they don't go into the waste and they go become compost that we will use next year in our community gardens. So just to remind everyone, and I think there'll be more information on that, but November 2nd, elementary schools.
Thanks, Maureen. I'm Julie.
I actually don't have more to add to that, but thank you for talking about the pumpkins. And in years past, you've had the kids throw them into the truck and it's been fun, but this is going to be just a drop off and Black Earth will come pick them up. I actually had a question for Steve. Do we know whether Broadway is open? I noticed as of this morning, it was not.
There are some issues with the National Railroad. Maybe Paul Donacco can help us. Lack of response to us that getting work, was getting worked out late this afternoon. We are hopeful within the next few days it will be open.
Okay.
We're working on it with very little help or from the MBTA or National Railroad or Keolis for that matter.
I just noticed the National Grid. It said something Saturday saying it was going to be open and it's still.
Well, they, they thought it was.
Okay, okay. I just needed an update. Thank you.
Could have been.
I'm Ed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just on the issue of voting, I just wanted to remind everyone that we are going full steam ahead with voting in person on November 3rd. So anyone who doesn't have the opportunity to vote beforehand certainly can. I know that with Emergency Management Director Walsh, as well as Ruth Clay, our health director and Mr. Mayo's office, along with our town clerk and her entire staff, they have created a very safe experience for anyone who's looking to in-person vote on Tuesday, November 3rd. Hours are 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. So I certainly encourage everyone to make sure that you make it out to do just that and know that you will be able to do it in a safe and very efficient way. So I just want to remind everyone, and as we all know, although this is, I guess, the first presidential election that I think we've centralized voting, all voting, all precincts are devoted at the Galvin Middle School. And that's the only location to vote in person that day. So with that, please go out and exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ed. Moving on to item number 12, matters not anticipated for the agenda. If there are any voting matters not anticipated prior to the 48 hours public notice requirement, but needing immediate action by the council, do I see any? I do not. Okay.
But Madam Chair, can I?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. I totally blew over you and Tom and anyone else. I was thinking, stick with the council.
One thing that the town is very lucky to have is an emergency fund. And we established it a few years ago, thanks to a lot of work, particularly Maureen on this. I think we established this in 2019. And since then, we've had, you know, close to 30 people take advantage of it. A lot of people, a high number of that has been in the last few months because of the COVID-19 pandemic. I will tell you that we still have a balance in this account of over $23,000. And that's, and I have two, two people in the till right now. So that'll come down a little bit after that as we review their applications. But if there is anybody out there that needs assistance, it is up to $1,000. It is a one-time fee, a one-time donation, a one-time usage. But it may take the edge off in certain, in certain instances. I know that a lot of the social departments in town, like the senior center, food pantry, our family services officer, Amy Rando, has sent people to me, please, it's very easy to apply. It's on the town website. You can do, it's under the town administrators page, emergency fund. You can do it all, fill out the application all online, and it is completely private. No one really knows, except for me and the accountant's office that writes out the check. So please, if you know of anybody, please have them take advantage of it. Thank you.
Great. Steve, thank you so much. That's such an important thing to remind folks at this time. I think with that, Tom, anything? You're good?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I would accept a motion for in German.
So moved?
Moved by Ed, seconded by Julie. Roll call vote, yes. Peter? Julie?
Yes.
Ed?
Hi.
Maureen?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, have a wonderful Halloween, everyone. Please go vote, make sure you vote. And we will see you all at our town meeting that following Saturday. Have a great night. Thank you.